Yes, we can. Let's start the meeting. We're going to start the meeting right now. Welcome to this meeting of the Brookline Board of Selectmen. Pursuant to the board's authority under 940 CMR 29.108, Selectmen DeWitt, due to geographical distance, will be participating remotely via telephone. There is a quorum present. All votes will be taken and recorded by roll call vote. Is that clear? Good.
It's clear to me.
Excellent.
Yes.
We start, are there any selectmen announcements or upcoming events or updates that anyone would like to contribute?
No, I think they're all still in vacation mode.
In vacation mode, good.
Can I offer at least one upcoming event?
Yes, you may, Selectmen DeWitt.
On Wednesday, September 10th, there will be a public meeting at the Edward Devotion School Auditorium, 7:00 PM, in order to present the options the devotion building committee is considering. And it's meant to be an opportunity for neighbors as well as parents to participate. So we on Wednesday, the chair, 7 o'clock in the auditorium at Devotion School.
Very good. Thank you. Anything further?
Not me.
Let's proceed directly then to our miscellaneous calendar. Only one item on the miscellaneous calendar, that's approval of the minutes from our meeting of August 12th. I did not have any—
Just a minor—
Selectmen DeWitt has some minor edits.
Selectmen Waschinsky.
I'm sorry. You're sitting in Selectmen DeWitt's chair.
We don't look at all.
Excuse me, everybody. I mean, everybody. So, any other proposed edits?
I have some minor edits.
Good. So I will move that we approve the minutes of our August 12th meeting as revised by Selectmen Waschinsky and Selectmen Franco. All in favor, say aye. Selectmen Daley?
Aye.
Selectmen DeWitt?
Aye.
Selectmen Waschinsky?
Aye.
Selectmen Franco?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Moving on to our calendar, we have two items for consideration. The first is discussion and vote relative to the filing of a warrant article for the November special town meeting. And who do we have to speak?
Alex Coleman.
Dr. Coleman here for that? Thank you. Dr. Coleman, why don't you take the podium, please?
Apologize for the casual attire. It's been one of those days.
That's okay.
So I spent quite a bit of time with town council, very engaged in dialogue about the proposals and had a word particularly around the commission on the status of women. And assuming that the last revision before she went on vacation, there was one section, I believe it is covered in here, there was one that just inadvertently didn't have gender identity or gender expression in it. It wasn't the one on the status of women. It was one later on. I had to do with contracts, I believe. And I'm assuming, when I looked at this casually, it looked like it was covered in all of them. It was just an omission, and she was going to send something along. She said, it was like that Friday deadline at 10:00, and subsequent to that, she was going to put a note. She may have sent it to you.
I don't recall. We have a latest version, but I might recommend that when the board votes, it does so with some latitude for town council to make any corrections.
Right. And I believe that it is, when I quickly just now glanced through it, it does appear to be. So we did have a discussion and anticipation of some of the other issues you may, that this may raise, is that as we went through it, as you know, the, I guess it's still the Human Relations Youth Resources Commission is basically having trouble meeting because of the resignations. And so, obviously, as you indicated, in a position to address it, although when we were at full complement, it was passed unanimously, the resolution. So, but in going through the bylaws, there are many of them that are either blatantly offensive or inconsistent. And so I think that it is appropriate, and town council agreed, to take on as a project for a future town meeting, a further amendment of the bylaws, particularly the ones that deal with anti-discrimination and inclusion protections, to be more uniform and inclusive. And so that's something for the future.
Okay. So, Dr., for those listening at home who don't have the benefit of having the handout that we've all read, can you just quickly state the purpose of this?
Right. The purpose is to add gender identity and expression as a protected category in the town of Brookline in all of the existing bylaws. And to, toward the end of having it be not only an anti-discrimination protection, but also a positive statement of inclusion. And that this is intended as a step toward that end. The resolution was one, this is another. I think, obviously, I think that Selectmen Franco, you know, language is still a problem. I had pointed out that in the contract agreements, I noticed when I was reviewing it, they refer to the contractors using male pronouns. So it's kind of, you know, there's a lot of work to be done. And I'm certainly on board about trying to help with that. And the other point in particular is that gender identity or expression, people who have a different gender identity or gender expression are not covered under the state protections with regard to public accommodations. And this would, well, first of all, the resolution addressed that, and then this will further facilitate that happening.
And just to be even clearer, what Dr. Coleman is asking in the purpose of this agenda item is that we, the Board of Selectmen, become the petitioners for this warrant article that would do that. Do you not want to be a co-petitioner?
I would be happy to be the co-petitioner.
I think it's, I think it appropriate.
I have no problem with that. I'm still learning how this town works.
Questions for Dr. Coleman, or in general?
I will just note that when we recently revised the bylaw in terms of the diversity commission, we did add this as what we called Brookline Protected Classes. So it is in there, and I'm happy to see you picking up the ball and carrying it forward.
And I would just point out that although people think, oh, Brookline, what do they need it for? It was until that point, and again, it was my sitting in on that meeting and bringing it to people's attention, it wasn't in any, any of the bylaws, which is kind of striking. So this is obviously a remedy that people felt very comfortable with. And I hope that we, as co-petitioners, will recommend it to town meeting. And if there's anything else you need me to do, I'm sure you'll let me know. Is there anything else?
Not for the time being, but I think we're ready to put this to a vote unless there's further—
Yeah, your part will be to show up at all the hearings to discuss this warrant article.
To show up at what?
All the hearings to discuss this warrant article.
Oh, well, doesn't the board have to show up also if you're a co—
Well, often there, often there, other people have hearings when we're meeting, so.
I will do the best I can.
As a first-time petitioner, we wouldn't want to deprive you of that privilege.
Second.
Second.
Second. Which is why I'm hedging a little. I know this.
So I'm going to move that the Board of Selectmen become co-petitioners with Dr. Alex Coleman on the proposed warrant article for the upcoming town meeting, special town meeting.
Subject to—
Right. Subject to final language being determined and articulated by town council.
And to include gender identity or gender expression in other bylaws. Can I just—
I'm sorry, so the—
I'm just saying what the purpose of it is.
The purpose of this article? Or the purpose of the changes that town council may propose?
The general purpose of this article.
Okay.
Right, and the purpose of the exception, the subject to—
Right. Actually, if I could address the subject to part of it and make a suggestion, is that timely?
Go right ahead.
Okay. Basically, that it would just be that all of the identified sections, that the section, the bylaw regarding the status of women would remain as it is. That all of the other bylaws, the language be consistent, and that it be gender identity or gender expression. And that's, that was what the omission was in one of them. Gender expression was, the word gender was left out. So we're not looking for any big thing. It's just basically typos.
Okay. So I'll take another stab at my motion. So I moved that this Board of Vote to become co-petitioners with Dr. Coleman in the proposed warrant article for the upcoming special town meeting. And that the warrant article be in the form, substantially in the form that we have before us in our packet tonight. And that the warrant article can be further revised by town council to address the issue of gender identity and gender expression as protected classes for all relevant provisions where discrimination is addressed in our town bylaws. Is that fairly stated?
That's a lot of work.
On the fly. Kate's very good at writing down what I say. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectmen Daley?
Aye.
Selectmen DeWitt?
Aye.
Selectmen Waschinsky?
Aye.
Selectmen Franco?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Very good.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you, we appreciate it, too. And moving on to our next and final agenda item tonight, it's the question of approving the application of Herb Chambers of Brookline, DBA Audi Brookline, for a license to buy, sell, exchange motor vehicles, second-hand motor vehicles, and parts at 308 Boylston Street. And we see Attorney Allen before us.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Betsy from long distance. For the record, my name's Robert Allen. I have a law practice at 300 Washington Street. In Brookline, with me is one of the attorneys for Herb Chambers, Frank Marinelli. Brad Gomes, who's the Director of Operations, and Tony Bruno, who will be the General Manager in Brookline. Also Jerry and Stephen O'Neil, the family that have owned this since 1984, are also present here. As you may or may not know, this has been a car dealership since the '30s, I think 36, 37, yeah. And actually, our own Captain Grobman was an employee there way, way back when. That's a good history lesson there. Essentially—
Was that back in the '30s or the '40s?
Yeah, he does, it does look like he could handle that. So this is, this is just an asset purchase. The O'Neil family, who owns the property, will continue to own the property. And Herb Chambers Group will be taking over the operation. Audi of Brookline will continue to be Audi of Brookline. That's the goal, nothing changes. We just, we just are here to request the Class 1 transfer. We don't have a lot of this in Brookline. I think this might be the only one left here in Brookline. You know, a lot of communities, it's just administrative. Here, we thought it was important to get it before this board, notify the neighbors, let everybody know. Particularly when, when people hear that, you know, a larger company like Herb Chambers coming in, there's a lot of concern that things are going to change. Nothing is changing, right down to we're trying to keep as many of the employees as we can. Tony's been in there on a daily basis, speaking with the employees, hoping, calming everybody down that there will be a change, but everything is going to be status quo. Number of vehicles on the property will remain the same. The only thing that could come up that we've been notified about is that Audi has a sort of nationwide image program, which requires, you know, shining your sneaker every so often and coming up to the standards. And this would be required whether it's Herb Chambers or the O'Neil family, they would have to update it to. And we know that there's something coming down the road. This does not mean an expansion. This is more of a facade review through the planning board, going through the sign approval. Mr. Chairman, you're aware of that process. So we will go through that, that process. But there's no thoughts right now to any expansion. The, the hope is to obviously grow the business, but there is, there's no thought right now as to expanding or doing anything like that. Status quo, Audi of Brookline will continue to be there. So glad to answer any questions.
I know there are some. Selectmen Daley?
Yeah, I think actually, my questions maybe are for Captain Grobman, because I do know, I personally was getting complaints a few years ago about Herb Chambers' operation that's just over the line in Boston, that they were parking cars on our Brookline streets and kind of driving fast as they moved cars from one location to another, and in general irritating people.
Sure. I mean—
And this is, this is even a little more, you know, densely populated, a little more central, with a lot of high school students and so on. And so I am concerned about what's going to happen there in terms of the—
Sure. Do you want me to— I'll just add to Selectmen Daley's list of constituent complaints. I too have heard those, and I've also heard complaints about the condition of the property at the rear of the lot, and you know, and as it abuts Brookline neighbors. Yes, correct. We started an inspection several months ago after repeated complaints from neighborhood citizens, specifically about using Lawton Street as a, basically as a parking lot where employees and vehicles that were repaired were being parked out on Lawton Street. What had, we met with Herb Chambers. There were also issues of speeding and, you know, other normal commercial district issues like noise, things like that. We did meet with them. We did a very thorough inspection. The valet company that they had hired previously within the few months was actually terminated because of the parking problems. The speeding issue and the parking issue has disappeared. This is about a six-month-old complaint that has, was eliminated. The whole issue was eliminated. There were a few issues with the citizens specifically who share the private way that goes from Lawton Street at the beginning behind the 525 Marshalls, Harvard Street, to the back of Herb Chambers. There were issues about towing companies dropping off in the middle of the night on the street. The folks at Herb Chambers have eliminated those. I've been, I have to be honest with you, having grown up in the car business, I've been shocked at the way they've worked with the town to alleviate those issues. Some of the issues were specific to the actual abutters on that private way, and they've alleviated those. There are always going to be issues, but for the size of the operation they have, there, it's all been eliminated. The issues we do have, of course, on Route 9 are a little different. It's a much smaller area overall, because Herb Chambers owns such a large swath on the Brookline-Boston line. And probably the biggest issue I see is the, any type of exhaust issues, which they've already dealt with, going out onto East Milton Road, and the parking for the employees, as well as the egress-ingress on Cypress Street. I did meet with Herb Chambers and Bobby, who we, as everyone knows, grew up in the same street. We've talked extensively about it. He's well aware of it. His brother lives on the same street. We're coming up with ways to try to alleviate the issues going, especially going into the Audi lot from Cypress Street, where we'd likely turn that into an exit only because of the, just the backups along Cypress and Route 9. The, the town went on to do a thorough review of all of its records. Mike Yanovich submitted memos on the volume and the maximum number of vehicles. We did a review of the folks at Herb Chambers. And, you know, everything I looked at, I don't see any reason to oppose this. This has been in place since almost, it has been since the '30s, because I don't remember that, but I did work there in 1980. And it's, it's not going to change much. There is going to be a change as far as down the road. They do have to gussy it up a little bit and improve it to bring it up to Herb Chambers' standards. But much, they've already taken the step of renting spaces behind the N-Star site, right to their immediate left, if you're looking at the front door, to store employee parking. And I don't foresee any issues, especially with the Herb Chambers folks moving in there.
So it's not planned that there would be a big expansion in terms of number of vehicles?
No. There is, and in our meetings and in the documents here, there is no plans of major expansion, certainly within the next year. But then again, there's the site issues, and they're well aware of the limitations on the site itself.
Just, just to clarify, you use the word shock, but in a good way.
Yeah, yes. Yes, my father, of course, Selectmen Goldstein may remember my family, but having grown up in the car business, it's a, it's a tough business. And, but the folks have been very professional and, you know, they've hired Bobby to here, which is, so it helps us coordinate within the town. And Brad Gomes, their General Manager, has been, you know, a real gentleman, so, you know, if there are issues, if there are issues on the side, I know that we will be able to attend to them pretty readily.
Okay. And I noticed, we did get a letter today, I think, from a person who lives nearby, and he mentioned the nighttime car delivery. I guess somebody breaks down, and they tell the tow truck, just bring my car. And apparently, there have been a few going to the Audi dealership in the past, and they kind of can't get in at night, so they sort of drop them off somewhere in the neighborhood. Is that, is there a plan for how to handle that? And maybe one of you gentlemen can respond to that.
Brad? Have you seen Mr. Micklejohn's letter?
I have not. I haven't seen it.
There are two other issues he cites.
That was an issue, the issue of tow trucks dropping off in the, in the middle of the evening. It is an emergency where they have to drop them off. Hopefully, it's on-site. We did have issues specific to that on the Herb Chambers site over in Carmav approximately six months ago. There have been a couple of hiccups here and there, but by and large, they've terminated the companies that continue to drop off on the public way or even on the private shared way.
Is there a place where a tow company can drop it off on the premises?
Yes. The lot, if you're looking at the front of the Volkswagen dealership, on the left side is a three-story attached building.
Right.
That area is open to drop off the vehicles. If the gates aren't open in the, because the surface lot, then— So my assumption is, but they could probably use that a little better.
Please, come right up to the microphone.
Hi, Brad Gomes. You know, just looking at the letter for the first time, it seems like there's at least a little piece I saw. It was once or twice, I think it said, you'd have these issues. So, you know, I would refer to Stephen O'Neil, who's run that property for all this time. They must have something in place, you know, or we'd be hearing about it a lot more than once or twice. So whatever that is in place, I mean, we'd be willing to do exactly the same and make sure that it's done. With regards to the other facility, one of the things that we've done, as the cap had mentioned, the problem is, you know, you probably got 80% of the business is done with one or two or three companies. And then that other 20% could be 15, 20 different companies who don't know the rules of the road, or the rules of the property, if you will. And, you know, what we've promised the residents in the area, and what we've been working on, is every time one of these happen, one at a time, we meet with them, we grab the driver. If the driver came and went at night, we contact the owner of the company. We give it to her verbally and in writing, telling them what they need to do. And we've created a drop-off zone, you know, for them to drop off at night, and every one of them is put on notice. And they're told if they continue to drop off in the back alleyway, you know, there will not be a lot on the property. And that's the way we've kind of accomplished it. So with regards to the Brookline Audi property, you know, again, I'll refer to the O'Neils, and they must have something in place. If not, we'll do the same thing. We'll take a corner of the property and just stop notifying all the different drivers and tow truck companies that that's where they need to drop after hours.
Okay.
And hopefully, it'll, through the process of implementation, it'll get, the word will get out fast.
From my understanding from the O'Neils, the only couple times that they can recall, and it seems like, says a couple times a year, but who knows? The, one time a customer had requested that it be dropped off at such and such a location. And the other time, it might have been that, might have been two, two— There's a spot there to drop off, but maybe two cars went off and blocked it off in a third-party tow truck. But, those tow truck drivers.
Can we talk a little bit about the number of vehicles for sale at the location?
Sure.
What is the current limitation, and what is the proposed limitation?
The current limitation is the same as the proposed limitation. So right now, there are approximately 140 vehicles located outside the property. That's excluding the 25 that we lease from the N-Star location that we use for employee parking. That's just on our property. And then there's approximately 77 kind of newer cars inside. We figured if the service was packed with cars, it'd be an additional 31, and then the showroom is about six vehicles in there. So that, those numbers will, will stay the same. Hopefully, you have a chart there in front of you that we put together with either Mr. Bennett or—
He just indicates 140.
Yeah.
Well, that's exterior.
Yeah, 140 in the exterior, because they're, the interior numbers, we went through with the, we met with, is it Lieutenant Jefferson or Deputy Chief Jeff, Mark Jefferson? And, and the Building Department and Captain Grobman, and went through all the numbers as to what was allowed inside. And as long as there's safe alleyways and the vehicle's been sprinkled. And this was just gone over. They replaced the interior elevator some years ago, and all these numbers were checked over by the town at that time, and there's been no changes since then.
Okay. Our Building Commissioner's recommended that we impose a limit of 140 vehicles, no more, parked in the exterior portions of this property. And I guess that would include new, used, repair, employees, people visiting the showroom, et cetera.
That's correct.
So is that an acceptable limit?
We worked with the Building Commissioner on that figure. So yes.
Okay. And O'Neils, you can nod your head. Does that approximate what your current usage of the property is?
Yes, sir, absolutely.
Okay. Yeah, I know we have one person with their hand up, so I'd welcome any comments from neighbors or interested parties. Introduce yourself, please.
Good evening. I'm an abutter to Brookline Audi, 20 East Milton Road, Unit 1. And my name is Richard Moore. I have a letter I'd like to read. Can I present the board of copies?
Absolutely. Why don't you hand it to Kate, and she'll pass it on to us.
Can you maybe give one copy to Attorney Allen? And we can share, I can share.
This evening, I'm representing myself, Richard Moore, Soheil Saad, owner of 20 East Milton Road, Unit 3, and Dr. Rosenbot, owner of 18 East Milton Road, Brookline. Being a summer application, as you can imagine, many people away. But I am here, so I'm presenting our views on this license application. We, as direct abutters, the Audi of Brookline, have concerns about this license application as far as how business has been conducted to date by this auto car dealership at 308 Boylston Street. These concerns are as follows. What will the hours of business be? Will Sunday work be allowed? Where will employees park? Will parking be allowed in their side yards? Will repair work be allowed in their front yard and at the end of dead-end streets? All the above have occurred by this business. All the above have occurred by this business. East Milton Road is a private way with limited parking and consists of 10 triple-deckers, 30 families, and approximately 12 small children in our residential district. The above activities do not mix well with residential neighborhood. Children's safety is a concern, and air pollution and noise, i.e. conducting repair work outside the building in early morning hours, created by this business is not welcomed. We are not against business. I, Soheil, and Dr. Rosenbot all have our own businesses. We are against business that does not respect the safety of our children and the well-being of our neighborhood. We request that the board of selectmen consider these concerns and make conditions, if appropriate, before granting this license.
Thank you.
Can I just ask, the repair work at the end of your dead-end street, has that currently been going on? Or it's something you're just worried about that might happen?
No, it's currently going on. Yeah, they have deliveries that enter the rear yard.
On East Milton Road?
Yes.
There are deliveries that enter?
Yeah, Clean Harbors picks up old oil at the end of our street. And there is business that conducted at the rear yard of our property, having something to do with wheel balancing or something, but it's conducted outside, it has a terrible odor, and has a related noise pollution.
So a hand...
These have brought up before to the health department regarding the smells from this vehicle.
And this parking, where you say there's cars stacked up, you've given us a picture of it on the back of your letter.
Yes.
Those are their cars, vehicles associ...
Employee parking.
Oh, employee parking, I see, okay.
Yes, and it was interesting to hear that that count of the maximum amount of cars, 140, does it include those cars in those side yards?
Okay.
It will. I mean, we're saying exterior of the property, 140 car maximum. So this is, you know, we haven't gone out and counted cars ourselves, but we've asked our building commissioner to do so, and he feels that 140 is the appropriate maximum. And I think you've heard the O'Neills say that's approximately what they do now.
Can we, I saw one of the O'Neills had their hand up about the wheel balancing, I think, that...
Go ahead. Could you come up to the podium, please?
This is the signed copy.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Steve O'Neill, I'm the general manager there. My father's the actual owner. The repair work that Mr. Moore is referring to, he's called the health department on several times, the health department's come down all the time and inspected the truck. What that is, it's actually not on East Milton Road. That's on our main lot in the service department, next to our building. So it's not on East Milton Road, it's on our property. What they do is they refinish wheels. The health inspectors came down two or three times, inspected the truck. This truck does the same sort of work at dealerships throughout the state, and was completely signed off by the health department. They've all got the scrubbers, the filters, everything on it that it's required. The only reason why we park it in that corner is because it's close enough to the building for him to connect to our compressor, so he doesn't have to run his compressor outside, which would make the noise louder. We actually suggested that to the health department. We said, "Look, maybe this is the only thing that we can control, the noise. Let's have them plug into our compressor, and that's why it needs to be located where it is." That does not take place on East Milton Road. On East Milton Road, the cars that you see parked, those are actually employee vehicles. We do not do any repair work at all outside the dealership. Mr. Moore is correct. The only thing that does happen on East Milton Road is that's where the Clean Harbors, the licensed pickup of waste oil, that's where they drive down and pick up, because the waste oil tank is located right at the end of East Milton Road. But they don't make, they don't leave a spill behind. I mean, they're Clean Harbors, they're very well-controlled and mandated by the state of what they need to do, but we do not perform any repair work whatsoever on East Milton Road.
Okay. Questions from Mr. O'Neill? Would you like to respond to that?
Yes.
Why don't you come back up to the podium, please?
Clean Harbors coming to the end of East Milton Road has a new, a new way of business. In the past, it's never been picked up there, so I don't know about the, where this tank is or so forth, but it's always been on the other, in the front yard, where it should be. And the health department, you can check with their records, have cited this wheel-balancing company for not having the proper filters in that truck. We don't think, where it's backed right up against our property line, that this truck should be spilling out odors to a residential neighborhood.
Mr. O'Neill, do you want to address those additional concerns?
I think if you check with the health department, you'll see we were never cited for anything to do with that. They had complaints where they came down, they inspected the truck, and the truck complied with everything that they asked them to do and had all the proper equipment. And the reason why the waste oil tank is now being backed up through East Milton Road is when we did a renovation of the dealership, just like a sprucing up of the inside a little bit, we had to move the tank. So the tank used to be on the wall, so when customers came in, they could see a big waste oil tank. We put it in the back of the service department that's blocked, so, you know, all the front abutters don't see it, and you can't see it from East Milton Road. Just the hose, just like an oil tank would come and drop off oil down on that road, as they do all the time for the different locations, same-sized truck, but instead of dropping off oil, they're just picking it up. So I didn't consider that to be a big impairment on the people of East Milton Road, because it's just like oil getting dropped off, and I know there's a lot of oil trucks that drop off on East Milton Road.
Okay. Do they come in odd hours?
No, they've been, well, let me say this, they've been instructed seven to seven. They are not allowed to come on the lot before seven, they are not allowed to pick up after seven.
Weekdays or...
On weekdays only, not on weekends. They do not pick up on weekends. We did also instruct our parts wholesale, where they drop off on a daily basis, to not drop off wholesale before seven o'clock. There have been instances where the pot's driver didn't want to deal with Brookline traffic, so they got in early, and they tried to drop off. We've since given them a warning, and we instructed them, "We'll switch carriers if they do it again." What he does do is he'll drive into the lot and park his car and wait until seven o'clock before he starts his truck and does any unloading, because they know, because of the noise restriction seven to seven, that's a no-no in the town. So we try to comply with that.
Okay, there's also in this letter, and this is for Attorney Allen, I think.
Sure.
He's asking about Sunday work. I assume you don't mean selling cars, which probably isn't very impactful. You mean work on fixing cars. Is that what you're asking about?
Inside of the rear...
The repair, yeah. That's the question.
Yeah, currently, there's no plans to have Sunday doing work there. I mean, if the workload gets to that point, then we'll revisit it at that time. I mean, one of the things obviously we can do is, Mr. Moore and Mr. Bruno can exchange phone numbers, so Mr. Moore can have a conversation. I will suggest to you, let's keep things in perspective here. East Milton Road is a very, very thickly settled. I spoke with the neighbors directly across the street from Mr. Moore, who I've known my entire life, and they have no issue with that. My brother lives right at the top of the street. He doesn't, he doesn't have any issue with that, and believe me, he's not somebody who hides his issues. I mean, there's, we will talk to Clean Harbors to see if there's another way of doing it. I just don't know that the hose can run all along that property from the serviced in there. I think they're gonna, it's the direct route, I don't think they'll want to pump too much. It's once every other week, is my understanding. But again, you know, there's new people coming in, we'll make the introduction, we'll work with Mr. Moore, we want to be good neighbors there. Mr. Chairman, you brought up that point. There is vehicle parking, employee parking along the side there. I didn't include that in my 140 count, because it's been existing parking for that long. And our focus, when I was speaking with Mr. Bennett, was sort of in the front, the visible part of Route 9 parking. This has been employee parking there for as long as this place has been here, so, but there might be five spots.
So we could prohibit it now?
No, I don't think you can prohibit it. I mean, I mean, let's, I mean, listen, listen, they, it's their lot, right? It's their, it's their lot. They don't park on East Milton Road. They, you know, East Milton Road is a private way, so they have, they have rights to park...
Is the access to those spots on East Milton?
Correct.
Okay.
Which they would have a right to, as in a butter to East Milton Road, so. They don't block any other properties there.
Mr. Moore, we'll give you one more bite at the apple.
We're bothered on the parking. Parking at the end of East Milton Road has not been done forever. It's been done when they were restricted to park on Route 9. When Route 9 had, went under renovations, they had parking half on the sidewalk, half on the street. When that was removed, they started parking at the end of these buildings, which has approximately the last four years.
Okay.
So it wasn't done forever.
Understood. Thank you.
I think we had...
Yes, of course, Slepman do it.
Do they have legal access to East Milton Road, or is this something that they established by juice?
It sounds like...
Do they have an address on East Milton Road? Do they have legal access to East Milton Road?
Yes, we do.
It sounds like they're in a butter to East Milton Road, and by common law, they would have rights to East Milton Road.
Well, you could be in a butters to a road without necessarily having legal access.
Except for Betsy, this comes right down to our property. A lot of times, there'll be, this has direct access to the property. As a matter of fact, there's some bays there. Way back when, there was probably direct access straight in at some point, but...
There's...
The answer to your question is yes, there's legal access.
One last issue raised by Mr. Mickelson as to the lighting straying from the...
Yeah, I'll just go through his. The hours of operation, I think, will be open till nine o'clock. Right now, I think it's eight o'clock, so that might be one change. No parking...
But the hours, that expansion of hours would be sales, not service.
That's correct.
Okay.
Will repair work be done in the front yard? Done it, no way. And then the lighting requirement, I'm sorry, remind me what it said about lighting?
That's in Mr. Mickelson's letter.
I'm sorry, I switched.
He's stating there's non-compliant lighting on the property, glare from two-wall-mounted, unshielded light fixtures flanking the service entry door.
Yeah, I don't have any answer for that right now, but we'll certainly take a look at it.
I would suggest, as you've been working with Northeastern, that they have found some lights that are downward, you know...
We will prevent the spillage.
Yes, there are some lights that you can have the cone of light coming down and affecting, not affecting the neighbors as much, so I don't think it's...
We've done that in the Boston to make sure that the abutters there on Lotton Street, that was, that's not even an issue anymore, because we took care of that so long ago. But we will, we'll definitely, this is the first we heard of that, so.
I believe you have...
Mr. O'Neill's got his hand up. Come forward, please. Mr. O'Neill, senior.
I'm Jerry O'Neill. Mr. Mickelson brought this issue up back in 1990, when we did a facade change at the dealership. At that time, the building department came out, we went out there at eight o'clock at night, put shields on the lights that are existing now, so that the top, the glare from the lights, the light would only hit the top of the fence, did not go up onto the families which abut the property, the three-deckers all the way up. The two-wall lights, Mr. Mickelson referred to, which he brought up at the same time, we put those there so our customers, when they go out to pick up their cars in the winter, don't slip on the ice or fall. We addressed the glare issue with them, and to the best of my recollection, at that time, this goes back to 1990, that was all acceptable to him. We have not changed the wattage or anything else. Merely a convenience for our customers and a safety issue and a liability issue that they have the proper lighting to walk out and find their cars, especially in the winter climate.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Attorney Allen, before we start condensing this down to a vote, I want to ask you about what you alluded to earlier, which is the possibility that there'll be some physical plant changes there in the near future. And, you know, I heard it through the grapevine that maybe it's not just a matter of cosmetics and that it might be something a little bit more involved, possibly the demolition of the old garage building, possibly, you know, a reallocation of spaces to building space. Can you speak a little bit more?
Yeah, sure, sure, I'd be glad to. And I don't know where the rumors get started, right?
Well, I understand there's an actual plan that's been, that may have been shown at this point.
Oh, no.
Is that not true?
No, 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 I can tell you that there were some plans for a hotel, for a lifestyle center there, all kinds of stuff came across my desk before this came alive. So from a neighborhood standpoint, keeping it as is is probably the best thing to do. I have not seen any plans, I've been told directly by Herb Chambers folks, that there is no plans to do any, and it's a pre-existing non-conforming, so any expansion would be expanding a non-conforming use and require a whole zoning process. So there's nothing we can do by right there to expand this use, except for cosmetics. The only thing I've heard about is cosmetics, is just sort of the Audi, what's it called again, Frank?
Image program.
Yeah, the Audi image program, that Audi will force upon the O'Neills or Herb Chambers or whoever goes in there. And that's just to beautify, you know. But I've seen no plans that show any expansion of buildings.
And the old garage building, well, I know it's not a matter of expansion, but it might be a matter of requiring...
They would be crazy to tear that down. Right now, they're on, they're right on the lot line, so they would have to comply with dimensional requirements, they'd be crazy to tear that down.
I mean, not that it's any kind of architectural jewel, but on the other hand...
I actually think though...
If there's major changes in the works, we'd like to know about it in advance.
I think it's either National Register or something, there's something that would be...
The elevator, I think Ralph told me once that the elevator in there is one of the first car elevators ever...
Right, so that's enough for Greer to put a hook on that property and make sure that nothing happens to it, but there are no, our plan is to grow the business there, and, you know, if that road turns into something that we can expand, there's not a lot of room there. You know, the goal would be try to, my guess is try to talk to N-Star, try to talk to U-Haul, try to do something, but I don't, that is way down the road. Right now, Audi of Brookline will be Audi of Brookline. It'll just be Herb Chambers instead of Mr. O'Neill.
Okay.
Sure.
I just want to be clear, so there's no, nobody feels that there was any thing. Once we have ownership of it, Audi will come in, they'll, they have their own architects, engineers, they have all these things, and, you know, as you see when you look at any new dealership, every manufacturer has what they call their image. You know, Honda has that little blue wave in the front, Mercedes has got the two-story glass with the columns. So when Audi comes in, they're gonna sit there with us as the new owners of it, and they're gonna say, "All right, here's a deal. Here's what we think we can do with this property, and here's how we want you to improve it." You know, they're gonna, they might want to say, "We want the showroom to have a taller facade in the front, they want, you know, the image program to paint the building gray instead of beige," and, you know, those type of things. They want, interior-wise, they want gray tile instead of beige tiles, and, you know, those are the type of things that happen.
Okay.
But once that comes to us, then we'll meet with the, you know, the select board and, you know, tending permits and all that, put all the plans on the table and say, "This is what we've been asked to do with the property," and we'll make sure we secure all the permits and have everything, you know, straight up with yous when we get that information. But it's an image program mandated by the manufacturer at that point.
So if Audi's image involves two-story something, glass or otherwise, I think you can expect that our planning board's gonna be...
And at that point, we go back to them and say, "It's been denied, and what's plan B?" Similar to, you know, some of our Boston facilities, that, you know, you can't do downtown what you can do somewhere else. And, you know, then it's just, you know, we work with them and we work with the town to find that the image that'll work in the footprint.
Okay. Thank you, appreciate the feedback. All right, if there's nothing further, board members?
I have one more question.
Go ahead.
Attorney Allen has said on a couple occasions that the plan here is to expand the business. I just want to make sure that we're not talking about installing a paint booth or expanding the types of repair operations that would be, just sort of...
Try to encourage more sales.
Exactly.
That's the goal.
Okay.
No paint booth.
Okay.
We took out our paint booth up in, off Lotton Street also, so paint booths are out of our lives right now.
Anything further? All right, I'm gonna move then that the board of selectmen approve the application of Herb Chambers of Brookline Inc., DBA Audi Brookline. Herb G. Chambers, President, for a Class 1 license to buy, sell, exchange, or assemble second-hand motor vehicles or parts thereof at 308 Boylston Street, subject to the following restrictions and limitations. First, that no more than 140 vehicles can be parked in the exterior of the premises; that the sidewalks shall be maintained in a non-slippery condition suitable for pedestrian travel, in accordance with Town General Bylaws, Article 7.7, and in parentheses, no parking on sidewalks; no auto body or repair work or painting will take place on the premises; the landscape area on the corner of Cypress Street and Boylston Street shall be upgraded and maintained; that hours of operation be limited to 9:00 PM, be closed by 9:00 PM, and that no repair work is allowed on Sundays; that no repair work will be allowed in the front yard sale area of the property; and that efforts are made to assure that excessive light spillage be limited. Anything further?
Can I suggest that the 1984 conditions be included as well?
So we can certainly, but I'm not sure exactly what those are.
618. That's all signs be subject to...
So we'll add the conditions from the 1984 decision as follows. All new signs be subject to private... All new signs be subject to private review and approval of the building and planning department, well, it's the, it's the planning board, I mean, that's already the law.
Yeah.
The premises be maintained in a safe, orderly, and attractive manner, we would assume that. For, for purposes of the conduct of the business, no car should be parked on adjacent streets awaiting service, delivery, or sale. That all necessary steps be taken to install pollution control devices. That a schedule of deliveries be maintained that will not be a nuisance to the neighborhood. And I think we covered the last one. Kate, do you have all those? Very good. Anything further from the board?
No, I just hope that you will continue to, you know, keep in touch with the neighbors and, and make sure that you're...
We'll make the introduction up in the lobby here.
...being respectful of those on East Milton.
And can I just say, in coming, since I was directly involved in the Lawton Street difficulties with the operations on Carmav, I believe based on our experience with their management, that Herb Chambers management at the Audi site can be expected to be responsive, and I hope they will follow the good example of their Boylston, their, sorry, Commonwealth Avenue college.
Very good. So the motion is pending, and I'll call for a vote. All those in favor say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman DeWitt?
Aye.
Selectman Wyszynski?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and good luck.
Thank you all, appreciate it.
Thank you, everybody. Go back to summer. And there being no further business before the Board of Selectmen, I hereby adjourn this meeting.